A lot of work was into this by the school staff and the people that behind the scenes did an awful lot of work to actually get this microphone working because this microphone wasn't even working an hour ago. So now to introduce the people at the table here and then we'll get into the basic quick logistics of the meeting. Most people have been to town meetings, but we'll make sure that we do a little refresher on some of the rules of engagement. But I'm going to start by, it's a little difficult because I don't stand, I'm at the same level as everybody else, but I'm going to start to my left, Tom Clark, Mary Myslowski, Tom, Tom, Council, Brian Winner. To my right is our Board of Selectment, Peter Smith, Dorcas McGurn, Mark Forrest, I think Mike Stone, our chairman, is in there, Dan, Dan Horgan, and then I think Bob Rittenour, our Town Administrator should be there, and Bill Scott, our Assistant Town Administrator. And I think that's it. And then I'm going to ask George Perkins, who's Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, to introduce the members of the Finance Committee, Richard Simon, who is the chairman, was not able to attend tonight, and George is simply an able replacement. So, George.
Good evening. To my left, way at the end of the table is Nathan Latley. Next to him is John Anderson. Next to him is Rafael Gutierrez, Stephanie Cox, our former chairman, and myself, and as, Richard is not here this evening. Okay, thanks. Oh, that's right. I apologize. I missed Bob Harding, who is in the hospital this evening.
Okay. Let me just go over the, just the basic ground rules. I guess we don't have those here. Any, any comments that we have? Like I said, it's very important to remember that the microphones are up front. It is not normally, normally they're in back. I must acknowledge the person who should state your name. Any amendment must be in writing, and we'll provide you with paper and pen and etch a sketch and all that kind of stuff if you do that. It's very important to speak to the topic that's under discussion, to speak to what's written in the article in the warrant.
When there's a vote, we generally have done it by hand and by voice, so please be sure to raise your yellow card when you, when you are voting. It's very, very important. If there's a different kind of vote, we'll let you know what that would be. And I think anybody that's, anybody can attend this meeting. The people that are non-residents are in the back there and wouldn't have a yellow card to vote. So with that, we'll move on to a statement from the Chairman of the Board of Selectment.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, welcome to the 2023 Yarmouth Special Town Meeting. This meeting marks the transition from the aged Mattakees Middle School to this state-of-the-art facility built here in Yarmouth to meet the educational needs of the intermediate and middle school students from Yarmouth and Dennis. Our thanks to the Regional School Committee and the entire Dennis-Yarmouth Regional School District for hosting our town meeting in this wonderful new auditorium. We're grateful for having the use of this facility to conduct our town business. On the warrant tonight, we have 20 articles, one of which we expect to be withdrawn, Article 18, for your consideration, most of which are necessary items to continue our programs and services through the end of the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2024. Our meeting will start by addressing housekeeping items to clear up the prior year bills, and from there we'll move right into providing funds to maintain the former Mattakees Middle School while we study repurposing that town-owned facility. We have several smaller capital items that will help facilitate services during the current fiscal year, and we'll also address a long-planned proposal to make improvements to the Bayberry Links Course to help improve the playing experience there. Following the financing articles, we'll conclude the fall town meeting with a series of proposed bylaw amendments on a wide range of topics that include changing the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, improving the manner in which future town meetings are noticed to the public, and seeking to change the town zoning bylaws to allow accessible accessory dwelling units. Taken together, tonight's agenda represents a fairly broad array of issues and proposals for your consideration and action. As you will hear in the presentation of each article, our staff and volunteers have put a great deal of thoughtful consideration in the proposals that town meeting will act upon. We appreciate their considerable efforts in preparing this agenda and the work that will be required to implement the actions taken by you, the legislative body of the town, on these warrant articles. Thank you all for coming and participating in Yarmouth Special Town Meeting. Your involvement in our governmental process is vital. We appreciate your time and commitment to our town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that we're ready to begin the articles in the book. You should all have the book with the articles so you can follow along, and we'll begin with Article One will be Chairman Stone.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article One as printed in the warrant.
Second. Select Board Recommendation?
Select Board Recommended Three to Zero. There was one member absent at the time of the vote, and one member had to leave early, so it was the unanimous vote of three to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee Recommended Six to Zero.
Okay. We'll ask for an explanation of this. This motion will require a nine-tenths vote.
This article authorizes the payment of invoices associated with prior years, fiscal year 2022, and fiscal year 2023 expenses that were not able to be paid before the closing of the books for fiscal year 2023. At the end of each fiscal year, some bills for vendors arrive after the close of the town accounts for the fiscal year. The Massachusetts General Laws require that a nine-tenths vote be taken at town meeting to authorize the payment of such overdue bills.
Comments? Normally I sort of jump on this, but I'm going to wait a couple extra seconds if these people have to mosey on down. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll take a, take a vote. All in favor of Article One, say aye. All opposed? The motion carries by a nine-tenth vote. Thank you. Article Two, Dan Horgan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article Two with funds transferred from the free cash account.
Okay. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Recommended Three to Zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, oops. Finance Committee recommends Seven to Zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Oh, we have a second?
Okay, we're good.
We've got a lot of seconds.
All right. This, the Dennis-Yarmouth School Committee turned the former Mattakees Middle School over to the town of Yarmouth on August 31, 2023. The Department of Public Works is seeking funds to pay for the ongoing costs of maintaining this previous school building. The necessary costs include electricity and gas, HVAC maintenance, and various building system maintenance costs.
Comments? Yes?
Vita Morris, this $200,000 amount is for what period?
Ms. Morris, it's for the current year.
You mean fiscal '24?
Yes, one year.
For one year?
Yes.
And the way the explanation reads, is this work going to be done by the Public Works Department, or is this an outside vendor being hired?
It's a maintenance contract, so several vendors will be involved.
$200,000 for, seems awfully steep.
It's a lot of building.
Not really one that's all empty all the time anyway, so.
Any other questions? Comments? This is a majority? This is a majority vote? We'll take a vote. Oh. Yep.
Who's occupying?
Could you introduce?
Hello, my name is Scott Conroy. I live in West Yarmouth. I wonder who's going to be occupying the building? Thank you.
Questions? Who's occupying the building?
Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. Nobody's occupying the building now. Some of the public safety departments are looking at using it for active shooter training, and then we are going to finish or start a study on the reuse of the building or the reuse of the site. So we've been working with the school department on the condition of the building and going through some of the prior studies from the school department. Then we're going to move forward with the board and select a committee and do a reuse plan.
Okay. We'll take a vote. All in favor of Article Two, raise your card and say aye. All opposed? The motion, the motion carries by a majority vote. Article Three? Mark Forrest?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Select Board?
The Board recommends Three to Zero.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Seven to Zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article transfers funds that the town has received during the previous fiscal year as Yarmouth's share of a national opioid settlement. This funding requires appropriation and will be spent on substance abuse prevention efforts.
Thank you. Questions? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Four? Dorcas McGurn?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Four as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen? Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend Three to Zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Seven to Zero.
Explanation?
Fire Department vehicles and life safety equipment are funded by ambulance revenue. This article supports the replacement of a 2004 Ford Expedition that serves as the shift commander vehicle and presently has over 95,000 miles. This frontline emergency vehicle has required numerous repairs, has extensive rust, and is at the end of its useful life. As of August 31, 2023, the RFA ambulance account had a balance of $409,302.17.
Comments? My Toyota got 200,000 miles. I don't know what's wrong with the fire truck. Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Article Five? Chairman Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Five as printed in the warrant.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Select Board?
Select Board recommends Three to Zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Seven to Zero.
Explanation?
This article provides funding to complete the replacement of the failed fire alarm system at the Yarmouth Police Station. This final phase is for the replacement of smoke detectors and fire alarm pull boxes, which are 21 years old and no longer compatible with the modernized fire alarm panel in place at the facility.
Questions? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries by a majority vote. Article Six? Dan Horgan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Six as printed in the warrant.
Select Board?
Recommend Three to Zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Seven to Zero.
Explanation?
This article provides funds for the replacement of a 2013 administrative and patrol vehicle with a pickup truck for greater utility to better meet the equipment-carrying needs of the department. The town is selecting an electric vehicle available in this class to further our energy conservation goals as a green community. The 2013 vehicle has some useful life remaining and will be transferred to the Golf Division to avoid the need for another new vehicle purchase.
Questions? Hearing none? Take your time. The stairs are steep.
My name is Dan Rosenfeld.
Yeah, get a little closer to the microphone, Dan.
All right. My name's Dan Rosenfeld. Yeah, I have questions about the feasibility of an electric vehicle, not only the fact that any minor damage to the vehicle might jeopardize the battery, but also the, the lack of any kind of history on maintenance costs for this vehicle. Have those been considered?
Mr. Rittenour?
It is anticipated during the life of this vehicle, short of catastrophic battery failure, that the maintenance costs over the five-year period are far less than an internal combustion engine. Yes, this is a fairly new class of vehicle. As a green community, the town has adopted a policy that when replacing vehicles, that we'll perform an analysis of energy conservation of vehicles available in that class, and we'll try to move toward purchasing those. We do not have a long history with the electric pickup trucks, but they are made by a major manufacturer. I know the Ford Company has this vehicle. It meets the town's energy conservation needs. Rather than trying to convert the entire fleet at once, we feel that this vehicle will enable us, number one, to carry out the goals of the Green Communities Program, which we do receive funding from, and also establish that track record for the maintenance costs in operation. And so to, you know, we've researched the industry, what the projected costs are, and to have one of these vehicles to monitor it closely, work with the DPW and DNR, we feel that the time is appropriate now to make a move to try one.
I have another question. Will the vehicle be stored in the garage with other internal combustion vehicles?
I'd like to ask, Bill Benetti is our Director of Natural Resources. I think he can give a little more detail on the storage of the vehicle.
Thank you. Bill Benetti from Natural Resources. To address a little bit more about maintenance, to address the question about maintenance and anticipated issues that come up, the, we looked into this, obviously, before deciding to go with this vehicle. The warranty for the batteries is eight-year warranty, which we feel, based on our use, this would exceed the useful life of our vehicle as a public safety vehicle. The vehicle will be not stored in a garage. It will be stored at the Natural Resources Lock Compound with our other vehicles. And the article will also cover the cost of installing chargers. Our building there is, has an emergency generator throughout the whole building. This, this charger will be wired to the emergency generator. In the event of a storm, we'll still be able to charge the vehicle, but it will be stored in the lock compound.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Vita Morris, at some point, does this town want to be known as the Green Town?
Yes.
That I guess I missed that. And it obviously requires us to follow certain rules then. I can't believe that we're going to all electric vehicles considering the information that's coming out all the time now. I mean, the dealers are not taking any new deliveries of automobiles, electric automobiles. They can get rid of the ones that they have in the lots already. And I think that what the previous speaker said, you know, there are some real serious safety issues involved with those batteries. They seem to catch fire all the time, and this is, it's amazing. So we're going to, we're now, in other words, the town is now obligated to go to all electric vehicles from now on?
No.
Thank God. This is unbelievable.
Thank you. Any further questions? Comments? Seeing none? We'll take a vote. All in favor of Article Six? Raise your card and say aye. All opposed? The vote does pass by a majority. Article Seven? Mark Forrest?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
Second? Okay. Recommendation from the Select Board?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Three to Zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Seven to Zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article provides funding for the purchase of a printer to automate the vote-by-mail process. The printer, the printer will prevent adding additional staff by automating the function of sending vote-by-mail ballots out. The printer will be capable of accepting electronic format address data and printing it directly onto the mail-in ballot envelopes to both reduce the time required and to increase the accuracy of the process.
Questions? Comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Tom Sullivan, West Yarmouth, Precinct One. A couple of questions for our town. Are we getting mail-in ballots from the state, or are we going to print them here?
So for all of the state and federal elections, those ballots are printed by the state, paid for by the state, and delivered to us both in kitted packages and individual packages. So what this enables us to do is actually put that kitted ballot package into the printer and print directly on it. Saves us the time of, and the expense of labels and man-hours to label all of the individual packets. We can use a CSV file to actually do that. So those are paid for the state. The outgoing mail is paid by, postage is paid by the town. The return postage is paid by the state.
Okay. Second question. Format address data in regards to where is the, on the addresses, where is that coming from?
It comes from our voter registration information system. So it's the voter list that we pull off of the website that is the state voter website. So that if you have, every time somebody requests a vote-by-mail ballot, we have to put that request into the system that that ballot then gets followed all the way through. So every time we mail something, we put a note in the system that it's mailed, we put a note that it's come back, we put a note when it's processed. So that file is going to come from that list. So if we have a signed request for a vote-by-mail ballot, it is recorded in our system. That's the system that generates the list that, that we do the mailing from.
My last question. Who validates the voter, the voter on validating? He's a registered voter in the town of Yarmouth.
So of course we do. We can't put it in the system if they're not a registered voter. So we do that, all of that validation regardless, even when we're doing a mailing and using labels.
But the Registry of Motor Vehicles goes to Boston. They do the verification in Boston from the Registry of Motor Vehicles.
So, Tom, it comes to us only, only if they are a, if the Registry of Motor Vehicles puts them in the system and people have provided the correct information, then it comes into the voter registration system? We process that accordingly. That has not changed. We process it the same way that we processed it before automatic voter registration. We do all of that in-house, so it's the same process. What this printer is only doing is allowing us to upload it in electronic file, and we still check our lists.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Took a vote. Majority vote. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries by a majority vote. Article Eight, which will be handled by Peter Smith, will require a two-thirds vote, and the motion must be read completely into the record. So, Mr. Smith? Selectman Smith?
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $3 million for the golf course improvements on the Links Course at Bayberry Hills Golf Course. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow up to such amount pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Section 44, or any other, excuse me? Excuse me, Chapter 44, thank you, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof. Therefore, that such, while such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town, it is the intent of the town that they be paid for in the first instance from the Golf Enterprise Fund, and further that the Board of Selectmen and/or the town administrator is authorized to accept any and all state aid, grants, or other revenue source that may become available for this work, and to take any other action necessary to complete, excuse me, to carry out this project.
Thank you. The motion made and seconded. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend Four to Zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Seven to Zero.
Explanation?
The Golf Division proposes to improve the deteriorating conditions of the Links Course. This work will include new drainage areas to multiple holes, new irrigation systems, new bunkers, forward tees, and the redesign of the fourth hole. The Links Course is 25 years old with irrigation systems, bunkers, and drainage areas past their useful life. This article will fund the construction of the Links Course to allow the continued operation of the course. The funds to repay this debt will be from the retained earnings through the Golf Enterprise Account. Therefore, property tax dollars are not necessary for this investment. The retained earnings in the account, excuse me, are currently $2,108,621 as of July 1, 2023.
Any questions? Comments? Yep.
Just a quick question. Janine Marisola?
Closer to the microphone.
Okay.
Not like me.
All right. So if I do the math correctly, it looks like there's a shortage of $900,000. So where is the? So where does the other $900,000 come from, if not from taxes?
This will be a borrowing that will be paid through the ongoing revenues that the Golf Department takes in, which are projected to be more than substantial to cover this debt.
Yes, yes, sir.
Scott Hunter, how does that help residents of Yarmouth?
Speak up, up into the microphone.
Scott Hunter, how does that help the residents of Yarmouth? I've heard nothing about helping offers of the town of Yarmouth. I've heard everything about improving the golf course. Thank you.
Yes, correct. An excellent question. What this article is geared toward doing?
Excuse me, did everybody hear the question?
No.
Okay, I'll repeat, I'll repeat. The question that the gentleman asked, what does this article do for the residents of the town of Yarmouth? And the answer to that question is that this article is geared towards addressing, we have a separate enterprise fund for recreational services involved with providing the golf courses to the town. So all of the finances are separate from the town finances that do the course services. Now, through our Golf Advisory Committee and the Golf Department, they've done an excellent job in recent years in maintaining the courses. These are significant investments that the town has made in recreational opportunities that are offered at discount rates to all local residents. And by, we've had some good years in the golf course. It is generating revenues in excess of costs each and every year for the last several years. And what they seek to do is implement a program of reinvesting money when the golf course is 25 years old. It needs reinvestment to enhance that experience so that, number one, it can continue to operate in the black, taking in the revenues, and more importantly, offering a resource to local community members to use the golf course. That's the general description of where the benefit to local residents.
We have another question, sir.
Yes, Rolf, hello, 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 hello?
Hi, how you doing?
Okay. Rolf Anderson, Precinct One. Hello, Rolf Anderson?
I think you may have to get closer. Yeah, I know. Yeah, there you go. We need to keep these microphones on when possible and avoid feedback. That's good. Anyway, Rolf Anderson, Precinct One. The question is, neither in print nor in your vocalizations have I heard what the town nets from the golf course in a given year. What's the last number? How much money?
I'd like to invite our Golf Director, Scott Gilmore, if he's in the room to... All right, he's there. Maybe Scott, you could give us a little background on how things are going with the Golf Division?
I request numbers. I just want to understand your question. Sorry, Scott Gilmore, Golf Director. You asking what the town gets from the golf courses? Yes, I do. So all the money from the golf course stays within the Golf Enterprise budget. It does not go to the town. And all our funding is directly from the Golf Enterprise budget. Well, how does it benefit the town? Because we offer discounted rates to the town residents to play the golf courses. So we're ponying up $3 million, it is suggested.
Hold up.
We are ponying up $3 million, but how does the town benefit? I mean, I'm not a golfer, but it'd be nice to see some dollars and cents come back to our town budget, in my humble opinion.
Do you think Mr. Rittenhour did not acknowledge that we've made money the last several years? But you want literal numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Moderator. One of the, the funding for this article is from golf, so it doesn't come from the town side. It comes from the Enterprise Fund. So, and the second thing, there is a direct connection between the golf courses and the economy. There's a considerable amount of tourists that come to this community and book hotels and go to restaurants associated with the golf course. No golf courses, less income to hotels and restaurants, less taxation from those areas.
Well, that's fine and good, but I want to hear numbers.
Well, $3 million will be paid by the golf course and not from the town. So, I mean, it's, if there's a, and the $2,108,621 is a balance in the account. So the town's not paying for the improvements. So if you want a return on the investment from the town, there's no investment from the town here. And the return is the fact that there is a great ripple impact, economic benefit associated with the golf courses. And in particular, this links course, there's been such incredible play, and I think Scott can talk to that issue, that we've needed to open up the links course to play. It's, because it's in such poor condition, it can't be used during certain times of the year. So we anticipate that we'll see even more play on the course when it was improved. Scott, I don't know if you want to go over the numbers we've seen in terms of increased inactivity and things like that?
Yeah, we've seen an increase every year since COVID. Or we keep increasing our revenue to further our value and further our investment to the golf courses. The answer to this question, Laura, we, on the town side, we don't take any money to fund our budget as well. It's all funded entirely by golf and not at all from town, at all. So I mean, associated with golf is funded through golf. So I don't, I don't... It's still fuzzy. We take, we take no, we take no town tax dollars to fund any of the golf projects.
Why are we voting on it?
Because we have to, we have to go to town meeting to vote for this article.
Question over here?
Given the fact that we've been underwater advisory...
You have to introduce yourself and speak into the microphone, please.
I don't know what my district is. I live up the street on Station Avenue.
Your name?
Ignoring this.
Okay, thank you.
So, given the fact that we have been underwater advisory multiple times in the last few years, including not being able to water our lawns and take care of our gardens, have we done an environmental impact study? Because the downside of the golf course is how much water it uses. It uses way more than the acreage that it serves. And that seems to take away from other things in the community that the rest of us value.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
The links course, as well as the other golf course, we have our own, sorry, we have our own well, and we don't draw off the town well. On top of that, the links course is watered through wastewater from the site, and we don't even use the water to water the links course.
So is it untreated water?
It's treated wastewater.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Take two more questions?
Tom Tivo, 206 Blue Rock Road. I heard a couple of questions of why this benefits people who live in the town, the community of the golf course. And I got to tell you, well, 10 years ago, when I came down to buy a house down here, we were looking at Hyannis, Yarmouth, Dennis. And what made us purchase the home in Yarmouth was because of the golf courses. They're way better than any other community around here. And I got a hats off to the golf team there, and they do a fantastic job, don't forget. It should be hands down, vote yes on this question.
Thank you. One more? Go ahead.
Hi, Leon Hall, West Yarmouth. You say how much money we get in from tourism and everything from the golf courses. How many golf courses do we have in the town? Two and a half?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay. But right now, you have businesses that are trying to man people that can't afford to live in this town. Wouldn't the land be better used for that? What do you mean, no?
Really? We'll take that as a question, and then people will vote. One more. Yes, sir.
Hi, Raymond Edwards, West Yarmouth. To address what the Golf Department does for the town, I live approximately 50 yards away from the links golf course in West Yarmouth. And I've noticed that it greatly improves the local businesses, the local convenience stores, the local restaurants, and the small plazas around my, around my house. And just to reiterate that the Golf Department is a benefit to the town of Yarmouth. Two and a half courses.
Okay. We'll take that. This, oops. This will require a two-thirds majority vote. All in favor of Article Eight? Raise your card, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes by a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Article Nine, Dorcas McGurran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article Nine with funds transferred from the free cash account.
Board of Selectmen, recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend three to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends seven to zero.
Explanation?
The Sanitation Division proposes to complete the design and permitting for improvements to the construction and demolition area. The borrowing for the construction costs associated with this project were approved at the annual town meeting on April 25, 2023.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, hearing none? All in favor of Article Nine?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Article Ten, Chairman Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Ten as printed in the warrant.
Article's been seconded. Select Board?
Select Board recommends three to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends seven to zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article is a repurposing of funds. The funds were previously appropriated for maintenance items at the ME Small School to the higher priority project of repairs and maintenance on the roof of the school due to existing leaks. The previous appropriations were for the purposes of fixing parking and drainage and conducting engineering work for the plumbing systems in the building. These projects are being placed on hold in favor of conducting the more urgent roof repairs.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article Eleven? Article Eleven will require a two-thirds vote. Dan Horgan?
Yep. Mr. Moderator, I move Article Eleven as printed in the warrant.
Article's been seconded. Select Board?
Recommend three to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended five to one with one abstention.
Explanation?
This article will authorize Eversource to install and maintain electrical service lines and related electrical equipment necessary to provide electrical service for the new Riverwalk Park at the former drive-in site at 669 Route 28, West Yarmouth.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor of Article Eleven?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by a two-thirds majority. Article Twelve, presented by Mark Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Twelve as printed in the warrant.
Article's been seconded. Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends three to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to three.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article provides the language necessary for the town to secure a requested $470,080 in grant funding through the state's park grant program. The park grant request would assist in offsetting the costs for the Riverwalk Park, specifically for the playground area and equipment, planting of trees throughout the park, and the porous pavement system and decorative, excuse me, the decorative lighting in the parking area. The CPA funding authorized at the 2023 Annual Town Meeting provided the funds needed for this reimbursement grant.
Questions, comments? Hearing none? We'll take a vote. Two-thirds vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by a two-thirds majority. Article Thirteen, Peter Smith?
I move Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend three to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends seven to zero.
Explanation?
The town has initiated funding of the wastewater Enterprise Fund using several sources of funding, including free cash, short-term rental tax, and the Septix postage fee and Septix vetement payments. Similar sources will be used in the future to provide funding for this account. This funding is part of the pre-funding program to facilitate the development of the town's first wastewater treatment system. These funds can be used for the funding of the costs associated with the design and construction related to the future municipal wastewater, including possible debt service. As the wastewater project moves forward, this article is meant to provide the initial funding to help partially defray capital investments and to assist in the implementation of the project.
Questions, comments? Hearing none? Took a vote, all in favor of Article Thirteen?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article Fourteen, OPEP expenses?
I move Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend three to zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommend seven to zero.
Explanation?
This article provides funding to maintain the town's schedule for addressing the projected unfunded liability for the cost of health insurance benefits for future retirees in conjunction with the actuarial analysis, which has been calculating the required spending to successfully meet this obligation.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by a majority. Article Fifteen?
Mr. Moderator? Oh, I'm sorry.
Article Fifteen?
Mark Forrest? Mr. Moderator, I move Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Article's been seconded. Select Board?
The Select Board recommends three to zero with one abstention.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee has no opinion on this issue.
My guy to vote. Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article, along with Article Sixteen, essentially changes the name of the Board of Selectmen in the town's bylaws to the more gender-neutral term, Select Board. Article Fifteen makes the changes in the town's general bylaws. Together, they make the legal change of the name from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board.
Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hello? Doesn't seem to be working.
Yeah, it should be working.
Okay. Dita Morris, I don't see any cost numbers here associated with making this change. Now, on the other hand, I just finally read the tail end of the article, and I see that the town clerk's office is going to be commandeered to make some of the, do some of the work that would normally be done, I guess, by other people. I can't imagine that, I guess, if the town clerk agrees with it, it's none of my business. But I just think that these kinds of proposals should be made with the cost... costs associated with them known to the taxpayers before we end up voting for them. That would be my, my comment to, uh, help me. Are there any?
I'd like to address that, that issue that underscore, this is a change in name only, so we're not gonna have a series of appropriations to, you know, take down the town hall and put up the new Select Board Town Hall. There's gonna be no costs associated with this article. Primarily, it will, you know, involve the offices letterhead, which we do on the computers. We're not gonna throw away any of the printed materials that we have, but over time, when, you know, new items are printed, it will refer to, Select Men will be called Select Board, but it won't be an investment of tax dollars to make that change.
Well, but, uh, obviously, the, you need the services of the town clerk in order to make a statement like that. Otherwise, you have to hire a person from outside to do that kind of work, because you have to be careful when you start making changes electronically. All kinds of mistakes end up being made, so that you, it's necessary to, uh, and, and this, this is, uh, I, I can't even, we can't even take the credit for being the leaders in such a thing. We're always following, oh, somebody else did this. So we, we really have to do that. We were just like a bunch of little, uh, you know, sheep following because somebody else did it. It's a totally unnecessary, uh, you know, kind of change and, and just a feel-good, you know, kind of thing.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments?
Hi, Mr. Moderator, Tom Sullivan, increasing one. Can I have a roll call vote by the Selectmen on this article? This issue, they had a meeting, I had to leave it, um, binding in the conference room tonight on this. So what was the recommendation and who voted for this and who abstained?
I abstained from the vote.
Who are the other members that voted on?
The other members that voted in favor of it were the other select persons. Or select individuals.
By name?
Or comrades. Everyone else except for Peter Smith, who wasn't, who was not present at the time.
My question is why this is being brought up now? For years, we had women on the board. I go back to the late Charles Strevel, Sulu McCallum, Tracy Post. Well, no change then, and all of a sudden, now we gotta change. His reach, I hate to say this, of partisan politics. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, this is a request that's come before the Board several times. It's really not our decision, it's your decision. So we decided it was time to bring it before town meeting so that you could decide.
We have one, one person here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Carolyn Burnett. I live in Yarmouthport. I was deciding if I would come up here and say something, and I happened to look down at this little crest on our voting card. To be honest, I never followed through with what the mailing was that we received last spring, but I know it was a fascinating mailing to receive, and I was happy to receive it. It was about talking about this particular little tent structure, whether or not it's a tent or a weetoo, and should we change this, this logo? The point in me bringing any of that up is, um, it speaks to history and thinking of the name of what we're going to call any individuals that might be leading our town, whether we're calling them Select Board or Select Men. Once upon a time in history, women were not able to be leaders of a town. And as a woman, I would like to say I am very much in favor of keeping it the Board of Selectmen. And I appreciate Stephanie Mary Dorcas, I'm sorry, the new finance director, I don't remember your first name, Karen, maybe?
Jennifer.
Jennifer, sorry. I appreciate the women and men that are working for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I, if I can respond?
Sure.
First of all, in the interest of full disclosure, I have two daughters. Both of whom work for the Yarmouth Regional School District. One has the senior school psychologist and the other has an ELL teacher. I have coached women's sports for close to 25 years. I have mentored generations of women and enjoyed every minute of it. I have written letters for young ladies to get into college and to, and to get onto collegiate athletic teams. I don't have any real opposition to the article. That's not my point. That's not why I'm speaking to you. I'm just wondering, is it tokenism? Is it, what is it accomplishing? What is it doing for women? If this article had something to do to promote the interest of women, for example, promote equal pay for women, or do something to fight breast cancer, which affects women in particular, I'd be out front, front and center. It's, to me, it's a political thing. And again, I, I wanna be candid. I'm not against it. I just, just wondering if it's, it's tokenism. And the other thing is, I never get persuaded by an argument that's based on what other towns are doing. I think Yarmouth should be leaders and not followers. Thank you.
Okay, Harry. I'm editorializing. As, as Mr. Forrest said, that's why we're all here. We're gonna take a vote. All in favor of Article fifteen? Raise your hand in the card.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Acknowledging some opposition, the motion carries by a majority vote. Article sixteen. Dan Horgan. This will require a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article sixteen as printed in the warrant.
Select Board?
Second. Is there a second out there?
Did we hear a second, yeah? Select Board, Select Men?
Select Board.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee has no opinion on this.
Okay.
This article, along with the previous article, changes the name of the Board of Selectmen in the town's bylaws to the more gender-neutral term, Select Board. Article sixteen makes the change in the town's zoning bylaws. Together, they make the legal change of the name from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion still carries by a two-thirds majority. Thank you. Article seventeen. Chairman Mike Stone?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article seventeen as printed in the warrant.
Second. Select Board?
The Select Board recommends three to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee made no opinion on this.
Okay. Explanation?
This article replaces the process of publishing the town meeting warrant in the newspaper with the posting of the town meeting warrant to the town's website instead. With the closing of the Yarmouth Register, the cost of publishing the entire warrant in the daily newspaper, being the Cape Cod Times, has become excessively high. The resultant publication is difficult to read because of its very, very small print, and follow, and is not used as the means for distributing the town meeting warrant. Rather, the town's efforts to distribute the warrant electronically and to print copies for distribution have become the most valuable means for distributing the town meeting warrant.
Questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Which will be? David Bernstein from the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Is this loud?
Get a little closer, yeah.
Without kissing it, I can't get much closer.
There you go.
Um, I move that Article eighteen did be withdrawn.
Second. There is no motion. Second? The article's being withdrawn.
Do you want an explanation?
Sure.
Conservation Commission moves to withdraw Article eighteen, general bylaw, chapter 143 on wetlands. Conservation Commission voted unanimously at our meeting on November 2nd to withdraw Article eighteen, the general bylaw, chapter 143, wetlands from the special town meeting on November 7th, 2023. Conservation Commission looks forward to bringing this article back for the spring town meeting, and the opportunity allows for increased public education on these important updates.
Thank you. Article nineteen. Will Rubenstein of the Planning Board? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jim Seaman. I knew that wasn't.
I don't believe we have to.
It's your discretion. Withdrawn, you can dismiss for lack of motion.
We're, we're, there's no need to vote on the, that article, it was withdrawn.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article nineteen as printed in warrant by replacing the text.
Jim, you gotta get a little closer to it.
Stand in front of it. Should put some lips on this thing.
There you go.
I move to amend Article nineteen as printed in the warrant by replacing the text Board of Selectmen with the new text Select Board each time it appears in said article. With the passage of the Article sixteen, the name of the Board of Selectmen was changed by, to the Select Board. It needs to be reflected in the zoning amendment article. I move Article nineteen as amended.
Okay. Article's been seconded. Board of Selectmen? Board of Selectmen recommends four to zero. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee rendered no opinion on this article.
Okay. Explanation?
Planning Board recommends. Uh, the purpose of this article is to amend the accessory apartment bylaw to mo, to promote the creation of year-round rental units to help sustain our year-round workforce, prevent displacement of local residents, facilitate aging in place, and allow for family members to live in close proximity while having their own separate spaces. The current zoning bylaw limits accessory apartments to family-related units or affordable units, which includes specific provisions related to deed restrictions, maximum rental rates, and tenant eligibility requirements. This article would eliminate the family-related and affordable restrictions for the new accessory apartment, allowing for property owners to choose their tenants and rent rates. The article is, also includes provisions to protect the character and appearance of our single-family residential neighborhoods by setting standards related to parking, stormwater, setback requirements, minimum lot size, maximum and minimum unit sizes, guidance on design and appearance of the apartments, living apartments to, limiting apartments to one per eligible lot, prohibiting separate ownership of the apartment, and including a primary residency requirement of the property owner. To ensure year-round usage, all rental units must be leased for a minimum of 12 consecutive months, and the owner-occupied unit cannot be rented out in any manner. Permitting for all accessory apartments shall remain via a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The amendment also includes provisions for addressing existing family-related and affordable accessory apartments and requirements for transferring of rights upon sale of property, as well as regulatory requirements such as setting parameters for inspections, enforcement, rental registration, and affidavits. I'll now turn over to Kathy Williams, our town planner, to review the details of the article.
Kathy, can I hold just one second? I wanna make sure I got a technical issue on the motion before you get going. Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Williams, Yarmouth Town Planner. I think we all know by now what an accessory apartment is. It's really that second smaller. I am heaving the mic. It's directional? Okay, I just wanna talk to the audience here. This, that second smaller housing unit where you have your own sleeping area, cooking area, your bathroom facilities, all located on the same property as a single-family home. They can be located within the primary home, like some type of conversion. It can be through an addition that's attached to the primary home, or it can be a detached structure somewhere in, in the back of a property. A lot of you have, may know this as an accessory dwelling unit, or an ADU, or kind of the more old-fashioned term, is an in-law apartment. So right now, Yarmouth does have an existing accessory apartment bylaw, but it's really limited to tenants that are family members, so by blood, law, relations, or, or marriage. And it's also allowable for tenants or income-eligible individuals with maximum rental rate. So that's what we call the affordable accessory apartment with a capital A, and there are very specific restrictions that go along with that. We have minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet, maximum unit sizes of 800 square feet. We require, as Jim mentioned, that it all is being permitted through the Zoning Board of Appeals, through a special permit. Property needs to be owner-occupied. That means that the person has to be their primary resident, so they're living there. And they also, we wanna be maintaining the appearance of this, of a, of the home with regard to the residential neighborhoods. And then last, of course, we have some requirements with regard to parking. Next slide. So why are we interested in making changes now? Some of you may recall that in 2022, we had a citizens petition that was signed by 138 residents, looking for some flexibility in amendments to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, really highlighting a desire right now to see some changes going on. We also have had limited success with our existing bylaw. We only have three affordable units and active units right now, and only about 52 active family-related, and these have been on the books for decades. So we all know right now that we have some issues with finding housing. We have especially a difficult issue with finding rental housing, if you've ever been looking for, for a rental unit. So we really are trying to create more of these year-round, smaller rental units for people to use. It would be for our workforce, it would be to keep our Cape Cod residents being able to stay here, our local residents. It's also facilitating people who wanna age in place, so they might be able to have a caregiver unit on their property. And again, of course, continuing to allow family members to live together, but kind of have their own separate spaces, but also allowing some flexibility, so maybe that could be rented out after the family member no longer needs that, that housing unit. So how did the Planning Board proceed? Taking these different needs in mind, the Planning Board really wanted to look for different opportunities to allow residents to create accessory apartments, but also we wanted to be sure that we had adequate provisions in place to protect our residential neighborhoods and also to not have significant amount of impacts. So the Planning Board has spent the last 12 months working on an accessory apartment amendments. We've had over 27 public meetings, including four listening sessions and multiple public hearings, really to hear what everyone in the community had to say, so that we could try and come up with different ways of compromise and balancing the amendments, so that we could build consensus on some changes. So what are the provisions that we're actually talking about? We're removing the family-related and affordable limitations. So this would allow the property owners to choose their own tenants, and they would be able to choose their own rental rates. And of course, we would still continue with the family-related apartments. We will be continuing to have accessory apartments permitted through a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, which does allow for public comment, and also provides a better notification, uh, as well as a notification in the newspaper, so people, neighbors will know what's going on in their near neighborhood. We also are continuing with the owner occupancy and primary residency to make sure that the properties are properly managed and that there's some onsite control and oversight over tenants, and also to ensure that we are getting that year-round rental unit that we're looking for. We have a requirement that there's a minimum of 12-month lease. We also are not allowing the other property, or the other home on the property, to be rented in any manner. So if you have an accessory apartment and you're renting that out, you can't Airbnb your home. We also can, also are allowing some flexibility for the owner, because they could occupy either the primary home, the larger home, or the accessory apartment, depending on their needs, and also depending on the size of their, of their family. And we're also limiting it to one accessory apartment per eligible single-family lot, so you're only allowed one accessory apartment. We're continuing. We're continuing with having appearance and design criteria. We want these to be smaller than the main home. We also want them to be consistent with the single-family home and the residential neighborhood. If you live north of Route six, you do have to do the requirements of Volking's Highway, so that does come into play. We did spend a lot of time talking about parking. It seemed to be a concern from a lot of people that we heard from, so we are requiring to have a minimum of two onsite parking spaces for the primary dwelling unit, but also having two onsite parking spaces for the accessory apartment. We've also limited it to them not being able to be located in the front lawn, because we didn't want people paving their front lawn, and we wanted, again, to continue to have it look like a residential neighborhood and in a residential home. And we also included some screening for butters for the parking. We have requirements with regard to the building setbacks and dimensional standards, so where can that building be located on your property? You have to meet the current zoning bylaw with regard to how far from the property line, how big your building can be, and what percentage of your lot it can be taken up, and also with regard to the height. We've maintained the ten thousand minimum square foot lot size for a studio and one bedroom, but we did increase the minimum lot size to fifteen thousand square feet when you have two bedrooms. So in talking before, earlier, talking about having accessory apartments being smaller, we've combined and related the size of the accessory apartment relating it to the size of the primary home. So what you'll see here is that we have limited the maximum unit size to fifty percent of the habitable floor area or eight hundred square feet, whichever is smaller for a studio or a one bedroom. But if you need a maximum of two bedrooms are allowed in accessory apartments, that could be increased to nine hundred square feet maximum. These are maxims. But we also want to make sure that we're creating functional living spaces, so we have also set a minimum of three hundred and fifty square feet. We also have provisions in our bylaw to address addressing our existing affordable and our existing family-related. They can just continue operating the way they are. They can get converted over to a rental unit, or they can decommission the unit if they would like to. And then the last item there is the transfer upon sale of the property, and we also have provisions with regard to that included in our bylaw, and it also requires affidavits and covers both existing and new accessory apartments. And last is regulatory requirements. So accessory apartments are going to continue to be monitored through both a combination of our health department and our building department. The health department requires rental registration, annual rental registration on all rental units, and it would include accessory apartments, and they get and they do inspections. The building department for the family-related ones does inspections every two years. And again, there will be annual affidavits for the rental unit that's required, and then every two years, an affidavit on the family-related information. And of course, you know, zoning is just one component of building something, and so you still need to comply with all the other federal, state, and local regulations, especially building code and health codes are going to be very important ones. And also, you need a certificate of occupancy before you can occupy the accessory apartment. So a lot of people have been asking us, how many accessory apartments do you think are going to get generated? It's a little difficult and hard to predict how many units we're going to get, but some other communities on Cape Cod have seen about eight to eleven units being created, and others in Barnstable, which kind of has a fairly lenient accessory apartment bylaws, saw about twenty-four units in two thousand twenty-two. There's a lot of things that go into an accessory apartment. There's the construction costs associated with it. There's all meeting all the different building codes and health codes that I mentioned earlier. There's also people who don't necessarily want to be a landlord or have someone living in close proximity to them. So all of those things will play a role in how many units that get created. The Planning Board has undertaken a very strong public engagement process through the last twelve months, really trying to listen to everyone's concerns and trying to come up with a balanced article that tries to address as many needs and as concerns as possible. And the Planning Board actually voted unanimously seven-zero to recommend this article. So these amendments are not going to solve all of our housing problems, but you know, they're just one more tool in the toolkit that might be able to create some additional rental units that are desperately needed by some of our residents here in the town of Yarmouth. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Before I go on, I would like to acknowledge, I believe the Planning Board met twenty-three times to get this twenty-seven. Who's counting? Sir?
Fred Churchill, South Yarmouth. Question to you, Mr. Moderator. This is an amended, this has been amended, the motion. Don't we have to vote on the amendment?
We will be voting, and we will have two votes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Sharon Deaconal. I live on Captain Small Road, and I'm one of the people that would benefit from this amendment. I have a head injury, and this is past my bedtime, and this is nerve-wracking, but I wanted to say that what I'm attempting to do for the last year is to put a small apartment in my basement for an aide to live with me, so that I can stay in my home. And there's a lot of hoops to jump through, and it's very confusing, and I've been working with the town for about a year, a little bit less. And the two things being restricted for how much rent that I could charge is restrictive because of the amount of cost of living going up in the last three, four years, and my income not from being on a fixed income. So my idea is to have an aide work with me ten hours a week and then pay a partial rent, and my apartment would be in my basement, so I wouldn't change anything on the outside of my property. So I just wanted to come and say that if you're considering the amendments, I am an a person that would really benefit from them. I would like to say that my family would like to come and live and care for me, but I'd be lying. So it's going to be a stranger, and they would live separate from me, so that we do have our private lives, and that could be a long-term kind of situation. So thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
We'll see if my voice carries. Christine Greeley from West Yarmouth. I do want to say I have an incredible amount of respect for the work that has gone into bringing this article forward. I have actually attended the great majority of the meetings, during which time there were a lot of changes and a lot of consideration given to the comments that were made by the public. However, I remain, at this point, opposed to the article as it's currently written. Some of my significant problems with this are the ten thousand square feet. I am sorry, but you know, having been someone who wanted to rebuild the cottage on their property to put a new house in, I needed to make sure I had over a half acre to build that. I then drive through the streets in my neighborhood, which are, the majority of them are probably ten thousand square foot lots, and I'm looking at the fact that you're looking at making this a duplex community, as opposed to a community of cute sort of little houses and things like that. I have a lot of concerns that this community right now is in the process of a nightmare about the whole issue of getting rid of septic systems and converting to sewage, and now we're going to double the use of septic systems on these properties while we are still looking at the environmental consequences for the septic systems and what they are doing to the land that we have. I then have problems with the whole issue of the parking, because I've got to tell you, I live in an area that is prime, you know, summer rental, and I'm sick and tired of dodging the cars. I've actually lived in situations when emergency vehicles have not been able to get through on the street because of the number of cars and things that are parked there. The enforcement process that takes place already is problematic. The idea of putting four vehicles on a ten thousand square foot lot is ridiculous, and I don't care how you claim you're going to shield them from the neighbors. I really don't want to sit in my house, which supposedly has a ten-foot requirement for side lot line, and have on the other side of my fence or the area that I'm looking at several cars parked. I'm also looking at the issue that the current enforcement, I'm sorry, our staff, I have a lot of respect for the people who work for this community and this town. They cannot get around to the enforcement that is required on a regular basis for what's already going here, going on here. And in particular, when I look at the summer rentals and things like that, owners are just simply dodging what's going on. And I know that a lot of properties, when I mention of them, have not been, you know, recorded or been inspected and had the various things that are supposed to go on. And so I really have real problems right now with all of the elements that are within this article. And I do think that the issue of the ten thousand square feet is a particularly big issue. And I do feel, you know, as the prior speaker spoke, you know, there are issues and things that do need to be dealt with, but I do not believe this article at this time is written in which a way will protect the nature of this community and my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got many more questions. If anyone from the Planning Board or town would like to respond in the meantime, just give me the high sign.
If you don't mind, I'll wait to let everybody have a few comments, and I'll try to...
Okay, thanks, Jim. Go with this side. He came down first.
Mark Fallon. And as the previous speaker said, I've been attending most of the planning boards, mostly by Zoom, but watching what they're doing. They've done a lot of work. But like her, I am against this article. Some of the, I'll come to call them red herrings, about aging in place or rentals for the workforce, without saying that we're going to have any affordable or any rates being set. You know, to invest in a new bathroom on the Cape, that's fifteen to thirty thousand dollars. To install a kitchen, that's another thirty thousand dollars. So people, and then you have to put in separate entrances. So people are going to be investing anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars, and you don't think they're going to maximize those rental fees? How is that going to help our workforce? And with aging in place, now we're going to say to our elderly, we want to burden you with an incredible expense to upgrade your house, when we already have the family ADU in place. We're going to burden you with the responsibility of being a landlord. I don't know if anybody here has been a landlord before, but it's not just collecting rent, right? There's insurance responsibilities. That hasn't been talked about in this bylaw, right? The responsibilities for what happens when a person destroys your property. All of those things are burdens that we want to place on our elderly? I don't think so. We're in the right direction, but I don't think this bylaw hits it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, let me just, Mr. Saban will address, because it's timely for this question.
Mr. Moderator, I think I'm going to need to address these as they go, because some of this just...
Yeah, because they get lost.
So just a couple of comments with regards to what was just said. The burden isn't put on anybody who doesn't want to accept that burden. If an individual wants the opportunity to create a housing unit, be it an elderly person who wants to age in place, or be a young family in our town that's just trying to find a way to supplement their income so that they can live on this town, and the cost that is to every one of us, we all look at what our economy has gone through, this would give those individuals an opportunity as well. With regards to the density issue, when you look at some of the restrictions that are placed on this bylaw, the Water Protection District restricts the amount of bedrooms that you can create. If you have a ten thousand square foot lot today, and you have a two-bedroom house on that, you can't add a third bedroom. You have to take one of those two bedrooms to make it an initial one. You can't add more. It's ten thousand per bedroom, so you'd need a thirty thousand square foot lot for a three-bedroom. If you have an existing three-bedroom today on that ten thousand square foot lot, it's what we refer to as pre-existing non-conforming, and you're allowed to continue that use. If you wanted to create an accessory apartment, you would have to eliminate one of those three bedrooms in that scenario to create that. So you'd have a two-bedroom unit and a one-bedroom unit. You don't add any more bedrooms. You're still at the same number of bedrooms. That restriction keeps us from having the issues that some are concerned about with regards to density. As regards to aging in place, well, you may not want to, but I certainly would like to age in place. I grew up here. I'd like to be here until the day they, you know, take me down to Woodside. And to be able to do that, we need to make sure that we have people who can take care of us. Now, if you go to CVS, or you go to Dunkin' Donuts, or you go to get your house painted, those people need housing too. Fifty percent, fifty percent of our workforce currently comes over the bridge every day to go to work. Fifty percent. So everybody that you come in touch with today, as far as workers, half of them probably didn't come here because they can't, because they can't live here. They've got to come over the bridge. So we need to start finding some solutions to these problems. You know, I keep hearing the word crisis, and I look at the word crisis because it's one of those ones that gets thrown around all the time. So, you know, we keep telling them, it's a crisis, it's a crisis, it's a crisis. Well, guess what? It is a crisis. We have, just tonight, on my way here, at Dunkin' Donuts, getting my single-use plastic bottle of water, I listened to three people talking about how they're going to sleep in their car tonight because they can't find a place to live. So we need to stop thinking about ourselves and start thinking about our fellow citizens and find ways to express this point.
Dick Martin, South Yarmouth. And first of all, I'd like to commend the Planning Board. They've done a wonderful job with this through many, through many meetings and with the community at large, and have done a great job in terms of what they're presenting. Despite that, I still have issues with it. I worry about the fact that Yarmouth is the densest populated town on Cape Cod right now. To take quarter-acre lots or third-acre lots and suddenly turn those houses within single-family neighborhoods into duplexes or, you know, another apartment or houses, one way or another, it's a duplex. Market rent, so it's not necessarily going to help housing for those people who work here in minimum-wage jobs who can't afford to live here. They're still going to be coming through Fall River. So I'm not sure, yes, it's a great thing for some people who want to get some extra income, have an apartment, but what, at what cost? Like I said, we're already the densest populated town. What's this going to do in terms of the amount of sewage that we're adding to the ground, the number of cars in a neighborhood? Suddenly, a house in a single-family neighborhood is going to become a two-family house with five or six cars there, and trucks and trailers, and God knows what else can happen when you're in a two-family or duplex neighborhood. We've all seen it. And is that what we want in terms of community character for this town? If we do, I mean, yes, it's solving some problems that are important. Certainly, housing is a crisis. Certainly, having places for people to live and people to maybe make some extra income all makes sense. I don't deny it. But at what cost? And are we going to affect our environment? Are we going to infect our quality of life? Are we going to add crowds, add schoolchildren to the schools? Do we really want to do that? I'd say, give it some very serious thought before you decide to go along with this bylaw, because along with the pros, there's a lot of cons.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Sullivan, President, Honesty. Couple of speakers stole some of my thunder, but a couple of things. I watched the, some of the meetings, did a good job on Zoom, and I hear some horror stories about the previous bylaw we have. Owners of the properties moved into the apartments, and we're renting out the house for anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a month, and we're getting it. Can't be enforced. Now we said at the meetings, how are we going to enforce this one if we can't enforce what we personally have? Rents are market-based. They're driven by market rental rates. We have no control over it, even though they have a petition out now to put rent control in statewide. But it is market. A homeowner who invests in it is going to recover his investment through rental fees. And if people can't afford to stay in the motel that we got with all the controversy in town, that three hundred dollars a week, this guy wanted to put it at seven hundred dollars a week to force them out, so he can get money from the state. That is what is going to happen. It is a market-based rentals. Boston is huge with the rentals. I have a family that lives in Boston. I hate to tell you what they're paying per week, and they work, they got college-degree jobs, very high. It's, they come down, I live up there, they come down here. They're going to do the same thing, and that's what's been going on. Do we have a problem? Yes, we do. It is a statewide. It's just not the Cape Cod statewide. Every town in the Commonwealth has got it, three hundred and fifty-three towns, just about. I have a lot of reservations about this. If we can't enforce what we got, then we should not go into this new one. It's not going to solve it. I have come from the philosophy that government doesn't solve the problems. Government creates them. Thank you.
Thank you. Go with you.
This is my first town meeting.
Your name, please.
Anywhere. I love it. I just have a question. Would the accessory units use, use the existing utilities, septic cable, et cetera, of the primary residence?
Could you also restate your name and where yours live? Ma'am?
Catherine Lykins.
Oh, thank you.
I guess the primary resident is going to continue with the same for the accessory building, correct?
Mr. Saven can answer your question. Just, we don't want him pushing you over though, so you're just that good-looking guy there.
I'll answer your question.
Okay.
He said good-looking guy, so it must be that guy. So the idea here is that the individual property owners have the ability to set rates to work with their tenant. So maybe in some cases, it could be the utilities are included in the rent. As the landlord, I have the option to decide whether I want to include that or do it separately. There are requirements within the bylaw that certain things have to be separate, like your kitchen, it has to be separate kitchen cooking facilities. But as far as how you work out your rental agreement with your tenant, it's between you and your tenant. So, and if I can piggyback on that with regards to the previous speaker. By the way, one of the things I love about town meeting, you can get up and say almost anything, and it doesn't have to be true. As we've witnessed a little bit here this evening.
We're on TV.
Economics 101. So we're concerned about market rates. So economics 101, supply and demand. The more you provide with a supply, it addresses the demand side. So if there are 20 people trying to rent a house, you think that guy's going to rent the thing for the less or for the more? Well, when we can provide more housing units than we can provide for lower rents. So it's economics 101. Yes, it's not going to be capital A affordable because we all have the ability to recoup our investments. That's why the tenant and the landlord get to work out a rental agreement amongst themselves.
Thank you. Sir.
Daniel Reek, Breezy Pond Road, I think precinct eight. I want to thank the planning board, like the previous speakers, a lot of work, good work. I want to contradict the previous speakers on many points, but I'll try to be brief. I agree with the gentleman who was at this spot before me with one thing, the government tends to create problems, not solve them. Our biggest problem statewide is housing at this point. That's the core problem for our economy, and it's steering our communities apart. We've heard the accurate data about where people who work here have to live, how they have to commute, and that is not sustainable. The key reason for that problem is the market, and the market is, we heard 101, market is demand and what is available, and what is available is artificially restricted by restrictive zoning. And I want to remind everyone that the majority of the people in this town would not have a place if the current zoning rules would have been in place at the time these houses here in Yarmouth were built, because nothing here is compliant. And so the majority is not compliant, grandfathered in this in turn. So I think the point, the point that we all have to take one for the team that was made earlier is a little bit misleading because all we have to do is get out of the way of people who want to build housing and rent it out and make housing available. And yes, it will not solve all the problems. And I support, I support this amendment with rider, it doesn't go far enough, by far. What we should be doing is open up the housing market that people build with the right restriction on environmental protections. We will do that with the sewer and other measures. We still have the dementia measures, we have all the other rules in place. And I want to make a prediction. Who pays attention to state has seen the recent moves around the commuter corridor, where the state has come in and has severely restricted towns' ability to regulate housing. And you will see more of that. My prediction is that if this problem isn't solved in a decentralized manner in the towns, the state will come in and use the voting power of the cities to take away our right to regulate our own measures. I don't want that. I'm a libertarian. I actually want as little state and as much local decision. So I recommend to vote for this. I don't know if this would be, if I had to make, propose another amendment of the amendment, but. When can I make a motion?
There's a motion on the tape. This we're.
Can I amend the motion? A motion to amend the motion.
If you want to make an amended motion, you have to put it in writing. So why don't you?
Okay. I can't write it by the.
Yeah, you have to put it in writing.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you. Yes, one more comment, and again, this is, I take no positions on this. Of 50 states, I believe Massachusetts is the only state where town meetings are legislative. So to a certain extent, you're the government. It is a fact. So I hear what everybody's saying, but it's unique if you have, if all, you've never lived anywhere else. This is pretty unique stuff. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Angela Carbone, and I live in, on Wisteria Road in West Yarmouth. I have to echo Chris Greeley in saying I think the 10,000 square foot limit is too low. I think it creates a density that most neighborhoods, I mean, would not want to have, that many people living in one small neighborhood. I know mine is a pretty small neighborhood. But one of the things I wanted to ask, comment about is, as it stands now, we probably wouldn't have many accessory units being built because we still have septic. And you are limited on the number of bedrooms that you can have in your house according to your septic. And if you want to put in an accessory unit, you may have to redo your septic, which would be a very expensive proposition. When we get sewers, which please, we are getting sewers, it's a great thing, and I think the town has done a great job on that. The opportunities for accessory units are going to mushroom. And I think they will, because people want to live on the Cape, people want to live here. And the people who are, who are working at the Dunkin' Donuts and CVS probably won't be able to afford the apartments because it will be so costly to build them. But the one thing that I wanted to go back to was enforcement. And how many more building inspectors, health inspectors will we need to adequately address the validity of this proposal? You know, how will we police whether the owner of the property truly is living at the property? You know, I mean, are we going to just rely on neighbors saying, oh, I don't think they live here? Well, I don't know, because we don't all know our neighbors. But I think enforcement is going to be huge, and I don't know if this addresses that. And I think it's a huge step forward from the first proposal that you made, that the planning board came up with, but I don't think it's enough. I don't think it's fine-tuned enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
My name is John DeWesel. I live on Bay Road, and I've been a lifelong resident of the town, and since retired here maybe 10 years. This is by far and away a major change in the town. It's not just a bookkeeping thing. It's not just the business of adding an accessory dwelling unit. When a person buys a home, they buy the building, but they also buy the neighborhood. They buy an expectation that the community they're buying into, the neighborhood they're buying into, has stability. When we change the zoning for a neighborhood that's established, and one day you're living in a single-family house with single-family houses all around you, and the next day you have duplexes next to you, you've changed the character. You've done it after the fact. I think municipal government has an obligation to its citizens, not only to remove the snow, provide the basics of life, the school department, police, and fire, and so forth. I think it has an obligation to maintain the integrity of the community. For most people, their home is their largest investment. So as this plays out, and I realize in the short term, there's money to be made, but life has to be more than just thinking about the next dollar. This is a forever change, not likely that it'll ever come back. Ultimately, I think this will result in higher real estate taxes, and that there'll be greater burdens on the police, the fire, and the schools. I do think the issue of enforceability is quite significant. There's a lot of good intention here. I know people who have worked on this and dealing with a very difficult problem that is in fact a statewide problem. But tonight, the problem is in this town and in amongst us. So I would suggest, for the time being, the bylaw that's been in place may not be perfect, but it has worked reasonably well. There may be more, if you will, tweaking and tuning in the future for this. But I think as drafted, it's in the best interest of the town to vote it down tonight. Thanks, everybody.
Jim?
Just to respond to his concern, I'll remind everybody that it requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So if you're concerned with what's going to go on in the house next door to you, then you have the ability to go to town zoning board of appeals hearing and express those concerns. You have an ability to say what you have in your neighborhood, to express it to your fellow citizens on the zoning board of appeals. So things aren't just going to be thrown in your neighborhood without you having an ability to speak on it. You have the ability to speak on any of these at a zoning board of appeals special permit hearing.
Sir.
Hi, Ray Edwards. I live in West Yarmouth. I'm for this amendment, and it's been a lot of people up here talking, and everybody that's spoken, almost, has been against it. I'm a father of four. My youngest is 23. I don't know if any of you here have 20-year-olds. Are they either going to live with you or be homeless? Okay? So for years, I wanted to build an ADU, but the restrictions that were in place, making it for a blood family member in perpetuity, forever, stopped me. Now, with these new amendments, with this new amendment, I'm going to apply and attempt to build an ADU on my property and have my 23-year-old daughter live there and charge her enough where she can actually be able one day to afford to buy her own piece of land on Cape Cod. And then I can recoup my investment by offering a market rate rental to somebody else. You know, so think of your kids when you vote for this, think about yourselves when you're older. You know? I mean, and I want to thank the zoning board, unbelievable job, a lot of work. Everybody give it a round of applause. They did a great job. And as for the inspections and regulations that people are concerned about, I have faith in the health department, the building department, the building commissioners. I'm a local builder. I work for a construction company locally, and they do a great job. I know firsthand, I have to deal with inspections and scrutiny. And I have faith that our town government can, they'll be able to handle all the inspections and the permitting, and everything will work out. Vote for it. We need this.
Thank you. We'll continue to take questions. I would ask, I'm going to have to put a little timer on the comments. We've covered a lot of ground here, so keep your comments hopefully to less than two minutes. Thank you, ma'am.
Peter Morris. We seem to have an anomaly going on in this town with regard to housing. More open than that, we keep hearing how we need housing, we need housing, and especially affordable housing. Well, we have a situation where the last two affordable housing projects that were built, in which the town residents can have up to 70% of the units. The first one, where the Cavalier used to be, barely made it to 60%. And now the newest one, the Yarmouth Gardens, or whatever it is, with 40 units in it, they just made 50%. We're going in the wrong direction. So I don't know how accurate are the statements that we really need housing, especially affordable housing.
Good. Thank you.
Hello, Irene Payne, precinct six, Gusneck Road. I've lived here for 11 years. We have a house that has an extra bedroom because it's my husband and I, and I'm constantly hosting 20-year-old nephews for a while, or sick sisters for a while who have cancer and they're going through something. We live on an acre and a third of land, and you know what? My husband keeps saying he wants to age in place. I'm not really thrilled with it. I would like to move some place warm. But on an acre and a third, we could actually build an accessory apartment or unit, and we could move into it and be happy in a smaller space and rent out the house once we retire, which my husband would love to do, and, you know, have some kind of a little income coming in. And believe me, I'm up for being a landlord for one family on a year-round rental. I think it's a good idea. I think that if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, it's going to be hard to do it, and you're going to find that out, especially if you have a septic system that's in a certain place on your land. So I don't think it's a really huge worry. I don't think a lot of people are going to actually put in 20, 30, 40, 50,000 dollars on a 10,000 square foot lot. I really don't think that's going to happen.
Thank you.
That's all.
Sir.
Hi, my name is Jim Cullen. I live on Woodside Circle, and I stand to speak in favor of this article. This is not going to drastically change the, you know, the character of Yarmouth. We need to stop this NIMBY attitude we have in this town. We need to provide housing. This lady just spoke and said it would be an opportunity to gain some income. Everybody might have a different reason. Kathy's presentation was superb. She told you what happens in Barnstable. Four units? Seven units? This is, they're not, there's not going to be 10,000 units in Yarmouth. We need to get over ourselves every once in a while and try to help solve this issue in one stroke.
Thank you. We'll take two more. We'll take Stephanie first.
Stephanie Cox, Yarmouth Port. Can everyone hear me all right? And I'm speaking as an individual, not as a member of the finance committee. I didn't get involved in this whole conversation in the creation of this bylaw because I did a lot of this work professionally. I'm probably the number one expert on ADUs on Cape Cod. And I can tell you that we are moving from one of the most restrictive ADU bylaws on Cape Cod to one of the most restrictive ADU bylaws on Cape Cod. See, changes are frankly marginal compared to most other towns that I've worked with. And I would have liked to see something much stronger, but that being said, it's a step in the right direction, and I'll be voting for it. Now, when you take a look at what's happened in other towns, guess what? The sky has not fallen. There has not been duplexes in every neighborhood. There are not bad parking situations, and this is nitrogen neutral, folks. You know what? If I, if my neighbor decides that they want to rent out an Airbnb, their house, fill it to the gills with 20 people, that's a lot more nitrogen that's going in the ground than if I decide I want to build an accessory dwelling unit with one person living there. This is how we have a sustainable community. And with regards to this idea that. And with regards to this idea that this is this massive change, drive up and down 6A, drive down the old historic parts of our community. We have tons of pre-existing, non-conforming accessory dwelling units, tons of pre-existing multifamily. For hundreds of years, it was legal to build ADUs. And then we changed it in the 50s and the 60s. And I won't get into the history of why we changed it, but it's not pretty, folks. It's not pretty. So what we're doing is we are just restoring our private property rights, and we are going back to the solutions that worked in the past in order to address the critical need that we have now. And one last thing, when we're talking about the people who need this, it's people like me. I'm your former chair of your finance committee. I'm a renter. Families making $200,000 a year are struggling to rent or buy in this town. Okay? This is not just a low-income problem. This is, the middle class is getting forced out. My family has been here for 14 generations. Excuse me if I sound emotional as I say that. There's no way another 14 generations can afford to live here unless we stop with this NIMBY attitude. The last thing I'll say is this: Change happens no matter what. We don't get to bury our heads in the sand and say, well, if we don't change our bylaws, then everything can stay the same. No, we've seen with the advent of Airbnb, short-term rentals, and the changes of all of the people buying second homes and third homes and fourth homes here on the Cape, that our community is changing around us, and it's changing for the negative because we're losing the characters that make up our community. I ask you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The clock is running.
Jamie Carter, Precinct 4. I'm going to read this in the essence of time. I'd like to speak in favor of this article, and my goal is to provide a perspective that might resonate with some of you in attendance here tonight. I've been a registered nurse for nearly 20 years here on the Cape, pretty much split evenly between the hospital and in home care, both at the VNA and through a home agency that I once owned. And I wouldn't be surprised if I've cared for many of you in this room at some point in time, or at the very least, someone you care about. I sold my agency back in 2017 with the labor of love creating that business, and the connections I made in our community are unforgettable. We were able to help so many Yarmouth seniors stay out of nursing homes and stay in their homes. If you haven't had to face that dilemma yet, I can guarantee you that someone you care about has. Sadly, I had to sell my agency because I could not find enough home health aides, and neither could anyone else. This staffing issue wasn't only limited to home care agencies like mine. It affected nursing homes, the VNA, elder services, Cape Cod Hospital, Falmouth Hospital, assisted living communities, everyone. It's way more than just the Dunkin' Donuts workers. We had several meetings with leaders from all of these organizations, along with representatives from the Division of the Labor in Boston, to address this crisis back in 2015. We all brainstormed on ideas about how to get more CNAs and home health aides here on the Cape as our greatest generation was aging out and needed help, whether they wanted to stay in their home or even live in a facility. The college offered free CNA classes. We held job fairs. We offered on-the-job training. We raised the pay scale as much as insurance would allow, and nothing worked. We determined that one of the biggest factors affecting the caregiver shortage was housing. It made sense. Many of the baby boomer generation had retired to the Cape, eliminating rental homes while adding to the demographic requiring care from the people who tend to rent homes. And let's be real, housing on Cape Cod has always been expensive, but fast forward a few years into COVID, and the housing crisis exponentially increased into disaster level. Rentals are sparse and ridiculously overpriced, as we all know. The low-to-middle-class workforce is leaving the Cape in droves due to having nowhere to live. And while that sounds sad, it doesn't seem to affect many of the people in this room. I'm going to take a chance on saying that we all have housing here. But like I mentioned earlier, it does affect many of the people in this room. You'll notice it when you get old enough to start to lose your balance and need help with dressing and showering. You'll notice it when you apply for help with home health care or shopping from elder services and get put on a wait list that goes well into next year. You'll notice it if you end up in the hospital or rehab and press your call light and wait much longer than you should have to in order to have someone check in on you. You'll notice it when you try to find someone to help your parents stay in their home safely and realize you have to be the one to do that yourself because you can't find anyone. I get calls all the time from friends asking me to help them find someone to help their loved ones stay at home. I used to have a list of names to give them, at least a dozen names, and now I have one name, and I'm pretty sure she's busy. I know a representative from just about every Cape industry could get up here and tell you the same story: Restaurants, builders, HVAC, irrigation, landscaping companies. It's tough on everyone, but I can't think of one more important than this one. And while I'm not wearing rose-colored glasses and realize that this will only be a small piece of the solution, I truly believe that this is the place to start, and I hope you take this perspective into consideration when you vote tonight.
Thank you.
My name is John Beach. I'm from Yarmouth Port, and I support this article. John Beach, Yarmouth Port, I support this article. Several speakers tonight used the word duplex. I didn't see duplex in the warrant, and in fact, I read a lot of restrictive language in there, which really contradicts the classic idea of a duplex. My deep, deep concern is that the term duplex is a dog whistle that appeals to our worst instincts. And I certainly hope that the character of people here tonight will not reinforce that perception, and you'll vote with what is needed and morally appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Two more. We've got two more. Sir? And you'll be the last.
My name is Kent Dumont, and I live in West Yarmouth. Let me ask the people in the front here: Who do you work for? Simple question. Who put you in the position that you're in now? I'm assuming that you folks were appointed by us. Didn't we vote you in? Aren't we calling upon you to do the best for us? Is that true or not? I've seen a lot of scare tactics tonight. I'm glad that gentleman that talked about a $15,000 bathroom and a $30,000 kitchen isn't going to build my house. There's so much scare tactics going on here. And yes, I understand the gentleman who said, "I've been here all my life, or I've come here, and I don't want my neighborhood changed." Great. That's his myopic view, I believe. And for the lady who talked about the Dunkin' Donuts people, how about the J-1 students that support our industries here? Restaurant industries, people needing help? Are we just going to discontinue them? I've seen a number of them in the communities. Do you know the squalor that these young people from another country live in? I've seen it. So are we going to turn our back and say, "No, I'm here, I've got money," which is my next point? We want to live here, we want to die here, we chose it. We are washershores. 11 years. We came, we, guess the first thing we heard? Oh, there's a shortage of rooms on the Cape. Where are we going to live? And you know what? Five years after that, I heard the same thing. And here we are again, saying we have a shortage. What are we going to do about it? Keep kicking it down the line? No. I firmly believe that we should do something. We want to live here, and we want to die here, but it's coming to the point where we're not going to be able to retire in place here. And what's going to happen? I think it was a lady or someone over there saying, "We just don't have them. We're going to be a rich community." Is that what we want? We want a place for people to come and to be able to stay for a short time or longer time. And it's my understanding in the regulations, I'm using my stopwatch, sir. Isn't some architectural review that'll be done for these units that are being done? I believe in the regulations. Don't we have to submit some paperwork to show what we're going to be doing, and it has to be approved? Yeah. Okay, call it the Architectural Board of Review or whatever. We're not going to be putting up tin cans. We're not going to be putting up sheds. We're doing something that we want to live with. So I guess it's no secret that I want to say thank you, and I support this.
Thank you, sir. Last question, last comment.
Actually, here's a question. This is Leslie Richardson. I live on Warbleer Lane, and I support this amendment. And all I came up to ask, but I'll say it to be quick, is that I don't think it goes far enough because I think it is too restrictive by not allowing second homeowners and snowbirds to make auxiliary dwellings on their property. That's part of the Cape tradition, and I think those would be net increases in units. And so I hope that this passes tonight, and then it gets amended so that it actually can result in some auxiliary dwellings. Because I think second homeowners and snowbirds are very likely to take advantage of this piece of it.
Thank you. The last word from Mr. Sager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I'd like to thank the people of our community for having this discussion. I think it's important that we all understand just what we're dealing with as a community and as a Cape as a whole. And I want to leave you with a quote from Elisa Magada, who is the head of the Housing Assistance Corporation. And she says, "In times like these, it's imperative that we stand together as a community and not let fear divide us. We must work together to find solutions." And I ask you all to support this article, to find one more part to the puzzle in solving our crisis with housing. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready to take a vote. First, we have two votes here. The first, the first motion, and it was seconded, is, I'm going to read it. To amend Article 19 as printed in the warrant by replacing the text "Board of Selectment" with new text "Select Board" each time it appears in said article. So we need a vote on the, it's a majority vote, on that amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes by the majority. The second, which is the main motion, is Article 19 as amended. All in favor? This requires a two-thirds vote. I'm going to ask for a standing vote. Please stand, all in favor. Please stand and hold your card.
Can I have the checkers come forward, please?
We have, you know, this is old-fashioned counting, but we have several volunteers who will count.
Can I just have the checker trigger again? I just hope this right away. Discharge and perform. Discharge and perform. The duty incumbent upon me. As a checker of the town. I believe students signed to areas. Please make sure. Could, we had, Chris, we had checkers. So could we ask people, please make sure that you are showing your card to the checker? If they do not see a yellow card, you will not be counted. Thank you. But please remain standing until they have.
So my card is now 52.
52 and so forth.
Yes.
If you folks could stand again, please, if you were voting yes, we just want to recount, make sure we didn't double count. Folks, we're still in the middle of this vote. We haven't taken the no votes yet, so please. And there's still one more article.
We're almost there.
Sue. Sue, we're good.
Thank you very much for your patience. You can tell this is not an easy process. All opposed to Article 19, please stand and raise your yellow card. Our tellers will go through the process again. The final vote? Final vote is, it has to be two-thirds. 296 yes, 135 no. The vote passes by a two-thirds majority. All right. Approximately eight votes. Article 20.
I move to amend Article 20 as printed in the warrant by replacing the text Board of Selectmen with new text Select Board each time it appears in said article.
Do we have a second? I heard a second. Select Board?
Recommends 3-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, where there's no opinion.
Explanation? Mr. Rubinstein?
With the passage of Article 16, the name of the Board of Selectmen was changed to Select Board and needs to be reflected in this zoning amendment article. Can we vote on it now, Mr. Rubinstein?
Can we have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the amended motion passes. Now the main motion.
Okay. This article would allow for the installation of additional signs on town-owned properties to acknowledge the granting of naming rights, allow for sponsorships, or accepting of donations to provide for an alternative funding source for the town. These signs would be regulated via a Board of Selectmen, excuse me, via a Select Board naming rights, sponsorships, donations, sign policy, and would be separate from the zoning bylaws. This has been done in the past for roadway banner signs, slat ladder signs, and fundraising special event signs.
Excuse me for a second. I made, we need to make a motion on the main motion.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so, no, it's my mistake. And it's been seconded. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Comments? Okay. Seeing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 20 passes.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Moderator. It's majority adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Thank you very much.